You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next, it's February 12th, 2024 meeting of the Long Beach Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Welcome everyone to the February Long Beach Town Council meeting. Can we please stand for the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The only opening remarks I have is we have a special guest Heather Stevens. I think she's on Zoom. So we're going to put her on before public comments to talk to us about our next election. Before that, we have approval of the minutes. Town council meeting, January 8th, 2024. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes of January 8th, regular council meeting minutes. Oh, I'm sorry. I make a motion to approve the January 8th council regular meeting minutes.
Second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, those are approved. Minutes from the special council meeting, January 23rd, 2024. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting, special town council meeting minutes of January 23rd, 2024.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And one more, special council meeting minutes, January 26th, 2024.
I'm going to go for a hat trick. Special council meeting minutes, January 26th, 2024. Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're going to hear from Heather Stevens. She's from the La Porte County Election Board, and she's going to talk to us about our election process.
I'm going to try to answer any questions that you guys had. I believe in 2022, a resolution was passed by your town council so that from now on, your elections will be held during the presidential years, is my understanding. Unfortunately, I was very focused today. We've got some big legislative House bills going on, and they concern elections. And we also had a big Supreme Court hearing going on that concerns elections. So I actually worked from home today to watch all of this and have a good understanding without being interrupted. So I did not bring your resolution with me. Do you guys have a copy of that?
I don't. I don't. It's not handy.
I have not seen a copy of the resolution.
I actually had a question because...
Well, it's out there. Are there questions with regard to how it's going to work? I mean, ultimately, Heather, this is Chris Willoughby. The reason it was passed is to try to line up with the general elections. And ultimately, that policy by virtue of being passed by the council and under state code can't be changed for a period of 12 years. So you have what you have. You're essentially this year going to repeat what happened last year. And then from there, the provisions of that, and I don't know if it's posted on the town website, but I can make sure that you have the approved and file stamped copy that Mrs. Stevens has as well, so that anybody who wants to be a candidate for the next election, everybody in the public in general can be well informed.
I think my only question was that when we talk about the election, so when we hold, we all have a one-year term, Heather. And then in November of 2024, there will be an election concurrent with the presidential election. However, the top two vote-getters will have four-year terms, and then the next three vote-getters, top vote-getters, will have two-year terms, which then means that we would have to have another election anyhow. And John, maybe you remember a little bit more, then we would have to have another election anyhow in November of 2026. But then...
Heather, does...
So cost.
This is Meg Collins. Heather, on the second year, so 2026, is that covered under the Indiana election then?
Yes.
So this coming year would be the presidential year?
Yes.
And then every, so we're okay every two years to hold an election? And we would no longer need to pay the fees of the municipal election?
Exactly. And I'm pretty sure that that's why, that's why the resolution was passed, was to get guys out of that municipal election cycle, so that the town doesn't pay for it.
And that's what, attributing this, the council person who sponsored this was Mr. Coker, and that was indeed his sell to the council was that after doing this, so the staggered elections will be the two highest vote-getters, and the town clerk will have four-year terms. And because the clerk is ultimately tiebreaker and potentially has a vote, there's some stability, and so that it's set up to be three and three.
And then, does anyone have questions about the, any timelines for the coming year while we have, Heather?
Oh, yes. Has the filing changed? It's my understanding that a Democrat or a Republican was going to run this year, they would have had to file for the primary.
Correct.
Okay. And so, anyone who files from here on out has to be independent.
Right. Well, I would say, because this is, this is very new to you guys, I know that I've worked very closely with both party chairs. I'm certain that if you do have candidates, I know that each party can, some people call it slating. Basically, you're filling the ballot vacancy. So if you have an interested candidate on the Democrat or the Republican side, I would suggest that they reach out to the party chair.
Okay, thank you.
And then, the only last item would be, we have later on the agenda, a larger election fee bill that we need to pay. While we have Heather, does anybody have questions on that? So...
Is that going to be the fee moving forward?
If we stayed on the municipal schedule, we would have to pay that fee.
That's the way that it's been.
So in 2015, it was, it was $2,100 and change. 2019, it was almost $2,800. This election, because of the changes La Porte County made, it's $6,500, give or take. So we could pay, and maybe Heather can expand on it while she's here, if we stayed on that schedule, we could pay anywhere from five to 10,000 probably, depending on how many voters we have and what the cost of the election is. And Heather can speak on, it's the mobile van and...
It's moot anyway, because you're stuck for 12 years with the new concept.
So maybe we...
Does anyone else have any questions for Heather? Okay, Heather, thank you so much for joining us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. You too. Okay, public comments, which we limited to three minutes. Do we have any public comments in the audience? Any public comments on Zoom?
Yes. Raise my hand. Yes, Mary O'Neil, 1532 Lake Shore Drive. I was hoping with a new council that things might improve, though I'm a little concerned that you're putting public comments prior to any meeting that you had, that perhaps people might want to comment on. I'm curious as to the rationale, but to me, it seems a little disingenuous, and especially I would have thought Mr. Remigius would be a big proponent of public comment post-meetings, where the people would have a voice. Now, you have a huge agenda, and I can't really comment on any of that, because I haven't heard anything. I think the optics of this are very bad, and it would appear that you're trying to squash any public comment. So I would hope that you would go back to how it's always been, when comment would be after the town council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment? I'd like to respond, Mary, and I believe this was a discussion that was had between the town administrator, there were people on the council, there were people like me who, thank you for calling me out for making public comments. The idea is that the agenda is available, and that people would have a chance to look at the agenda, and then their questions, they can public comment, and their questions might be answered during the meeting, is opposed to the end of the meeting where it's simply public comment, and the council and/or the clerk have no responsibility to answer any questions. And this was opening it up to people who would look and be responsive to the agenda and have questions that we could then possibly answer. Thank you.
Okay, well, I am responsive to that, but it's hard again, once again. But you've had an agenda, but there's been no discussion, there's been nothing, so there's really nothing to comment on.
I think if you come to meetings...
I think I'm sick of that, but I should have expected nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, committee reports. Police Department Commission, Chief Swistick.
Good evening, everyone. The Long Beach Police Department responded to 176 calls for service when compared to 208 calls for service in 2023 for the month of January 2024. During the month of January, 13 incident reports were documented. A total of six individuals were arrested. Two misdemeanor arrests related to traffic offenses for driving while suspended. One arrest for reckless driving and driving while suspended. Two misdemeanor operating while intoxicated arrests. One felony arrest warrant was served for battery from an individual that was stopped on a traffic stop. During the month, we experienced one week of bitter cold and another week of 30-plus inches of snow. Therefore, that contributed to the overall decrease in officer-initiated activity due to the extreme weather conditions. One of the things we stress with our staff during the extreme weather conditions is to make sure that they're making their patrols, keeping the residents safe, and not initiating self-initiated traffic stops and putting themselves in harm's way out on the roadways. The last thing I'd want to see is one of our deputies being struck by a vehicle on an icy roadway. So therefore, that kind of explains why our calls were a little bit down for the month. Last month, I was at a call with our wonderful fire department. Thank you to our fire department for everything they do each and every month, and one of their members brought up about the address identifications in the town. We still have several homes that have not properly identified their homes, so we're asking, as your emergency first responders, if you want us to find you quickly, please assist us in finding you by making sure that your homes are properly marked with your address. We appreciate, even if you have it in two locations, up on the house, on the mailbox, the more the merrier, helps our first responders in finding your home. We have this information on the website as well. We put it up this month, and then we also sent out an email to the residents that are on our email notification system, advising them of such as well. Police Commission, we had two meetings. One on January 25th, which was our quarterly meeting. We discussed under Old Business, and we'll touch on it here this evening, the public safety facility update. We talked about a patrol car replacement. That's actually on our agenda tonight as well. We talked about the police service contracts, both for Dunland and the town of Michiana Shores. For those of you that are not aware, we have service contracts for both the Dunland Beach Homeowners Association and the town of Michiana Shores. We serve as their police department as well. Both of those contracts were renewed for three years. During the term of three years, in total, the Dunland Beach three-year contract was increased to 9%, 3% each year, and the town of Michiana Shores increased their contract with us by 20%, 10% the first year and 5% in years two and three, therefore bringing additional revenue into the town of Long Beach for the services that we provide to those other communities. We talked about under New Business, and he's here, and we're going to keep talking about it each and every month until his retirement on April 10th. Our chief deputy marshal, who's back there in the my left corner of the room, Chief Marshal James Schooly, announced his retirement after 20 years of dedicated service to the town. So we informed the police commission of that. He's currently on vacation, beginning to ease into his retirement, which he will begin on April 10th. We talked about the resignation of one of our officers after 10 years of service, and that we are currently hiring two deputy marshals to fulfill our full-time staff. We'll speak about that here shortly. And then, we held, let's see, last week, February 9th, we held a special meeting of the police commission. That agenda was very short. We had one thing under New Business, and that was seeking the approval of the police commission to recommend the hiring of an applicant that was previously interviewed by the commissioners. The recommendation of the police commission was to approve. That was two in favor, none against, to recommend at tonight's meeting here to the town council to hire that individual that was interviewed during their executive session. So that leads me into, we've had two openings. The council at your special meeting three weeks ago had approved the hiring of Deputy Matthew Vopat, who's, today was his first day on the road. Matthew, if you could please stand up for me. Deputy Matthew Vopat is our newest deputy. Deputy Vopat started today. We are very blessed to more or less borrow slash steal him from the town of Westville. So he comes to us with several years of law enforcement experience, and he's already a graduate of the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy. He loves responding to medical calls. He's actually an EMR, is it? An EMR certified medical technician. So he'll be working side by side with our first responders from the fire department going to medical calls, and then he has many other numerous traits that we are very blessed to have here in the town. So thank you to Matthew for joining the team. So with that, we have conducted interviews of three other certified police officers. The interviews were conducted in-house by the police department board. We then moved the applicant forward to the police commission last week. You just heard that the police commission voted to pass that individual on to you tonight, so I'd like to take a moment to speak about the applicant. And then, at the conclusion of this, I would ask for the council's recommendation to hire this individual. And that individual is with us tonight. It is Deputy Matthew Disbro. Matthew has been with the La Porte County Sheriff's Department for the past two years. He's Indiana Law Enforcement graduate, certified here in the state of Indiana, and comes to us with a vast amount of experience, vast amount of knowledge, and I will tell you, in doing the majority of his background with the other officers on our department, which I'm very grateful to both Deputy Farthing and Deputy Seitz for all the work that they did on these backgrounds, his referrals were all exceptional from everybody that we spoke to. So I want to give you a little bit of background in his military service in the Coast Guard, where he served for six years. Now, many of you know that we have a Coast Guard base here in Michigan City. You see him out on our beautiful lakefront each and every summer. However, Deputy Matthew Disbro served in the United States Coast Guard a little bit differently than those that you see here locally at the Michigan City Coast Guard. He served overseas, and he served in a very dangerous area where he was doing some boardings of some very dangerous vessels, and these are some of the accommodations. One, I'll speak about his Indiana Law Enforcement Academy graduation. He was the top gun in his class. He received awards from the Department of Homeland Security on the Global War of Terror Medal, Global War on Terror Expeditionary Medal, the Coast Guard Overseas Ribbon, Coast Guard Good Conduct Medal, the Coast Guard Sea Service Ribbon, Coast Guard Rifle Marksmanship Ribbon, Coast Guard Pistol Marksmanship Ribbon with Sharpshooter, Coast Guard Achievement Medal with Operation O Device, National Defense Service Medal, the Coast Guard Merit Team Commendation, Department of Homeland Security Firearms Corps Sharpshooter, and was also locally a Neil Thompson Scholarship Awardee. Since joining the La Porte County Sheriff's Department, he is recently married. His wife is here with us tonight, Mrs. Disbro, and they bought a home here in the town of Trail Creek, so nearby to the town of Long Beach. Shannon may want to say a few words after I'm done here, but she was in on the interview last week. We were very, very impressed by Deputy Disbro. And those of you that are sports enthusiasts, when you had an NFL team or you're building a professional team, the Long Beach Police Department could not be more proud in the franchise that we're building here. And I'll tell you what, us hiring Deputy Disbro tonight would be a definite benefit to this town. He brings a lot to the department. We're looking forward to him taking over as our commander of our water vessel that you see out on the lakefront. He'll be running the boat operations for the department as well, so we look forward to his participation with that. I spoke to Sheriff Ron Heeg. Although disappointed, he gave a very good favorable hiring recommendation and said that he would be an excellent hire for the town of Long Beach if, in fact, we would hire him tonight. So, comes from a law enforcement family. His father is here with us tonight, Michael Disbro, who served as the captain at the La Porte County Sheriff's Department back when I was a lot younger. Mike and I worked together in our past cross when he was with the sheriff's department. In fact, Matthew Disbro's son tonight showed me a photo from back in the day when I actually had some facial hair and a goatee. So I do remember those days, Mike, so we had a lot of fun back in the day. But again, back to the seriousness of today, my recommendation and the recommendation of the Long Beach Police Department is for the town of Long Beach Council this evening to vote for the hiring of Deputy Matthew Disbro, and therefore, I'd like to swear him in tonight and move forward with this hiring process. Shane, I guess, would you like to say a few words?
Well, first, it was a pleasure to meet you during the interview, and to your family, thank you for allowing him to become a part of our family. So we look forward to having you on the streets, protecting us, and getting to know us as neighbors. So thank you very much for wanting to be a part of our community. So I move to make a motion to hire...
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Clerk Collins, if you can meet me at the podium, we'll do the official swearing-in.
I, Mark J. Swistec, Chief Marshal of the town of Long Beach, County of La Porte, State of Indiana, do hereby constitute and appoint Matthew M. Disbro, a resident of La Porte County, State of Indiana, to be my full-time deputy marshal within and for the town of Long Beach, and to do and perform any and all duties and acts that may be required of him as a deputy marshal within said town.
Raise your right hand. I, Matthew M. Disbro.
I, Matthew M. Disbro.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And Constitution of the State of Indiana...
And Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And honestly...
And honestly...
Discharge my duties...
Discharge my duties...
As a deputy marshal of Long Beach...
As a deputy marshal of Long Beach...
La Porte County...
La Porte County...
State of Indiana...
State of Indiana...
To the best of my skill and ability...
To the best of my skill and ability...
So help me God...
So help me God.
Congratulations. There it's a badge. Before you go tonight, make sure that you get these three signed for me. I'll give them back to Deputy Farthing back there. And one of the wonderful parts about law enforcement serving our community is public speaking, so therefore, I'd ask they just say a few words to your new town council. So congratulations. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the town council, I just want to say thank you for the vote of confidence, and I look forward to serving the great residents of the beautiful town of Long Beach. I definitely have some great fellow officers that I got to work with and look up to, so I definitely look forward to working and serving for your town. Thank you.
Madam President, Madam President, before I close, I'd just like to, we met Deputy Vopat tonight, you met Deputy Disbro, Deputy Matthew Farthing, who we hired last November, I'd like him to stand so you can kind of get to know him as well. He'll be actually transferring to our day shift here very soon, so he'll actually get to see what the town looks like during the day rather than at night, so. And then Deputy Seitz isn't with us tonight because he just came off of three straight days of working midnight, so hopefully he's home resting with his family, so thank you very much.
You seem to be hiring a lot of Matts.
Actually, we only have one other officer, and his name is Mitchell Seitz. I'm thinking about changing that to Matt, so when I say Matt, they'll all turn and look at me, so.
Okay, thank you. Town Administrator, Chief Swistec.
Most of the things I need to cover tonight are within the agenda before you. I will just touch on the Public Works team. We haven't met since, you know, our last snowstorm and that, so I cannot say enough about our Street and Water Department. You know, Tom, Brent, Austin, Greg, all did a phenomenal job keeping the roadways clear, keeping the roadways salted. Those guys started that morning, Friday morning, when we had a substantial snowfall. Those four gentlemen, they started out about 5:00 in the morning, and they plowed almost till 9:00 o'clock that night before they finally climbed out of those trucks and went home to their families to sleep for a couple hours, and then turned around after just a couple hours of sleep and went back at it again the next day. So we had a few malfunctions with the trucks, the salt spreaders, little things, but in-house they were able to repair those. Actually, I was over at the Street Department garage today, and they're still doing some repairs on one of our large plow trucks. One of the metal components on the front of the truck, just from normal wear and tear after, well, it's now 12 years of service. Actually, it's got some defects in it, but actually, Tom and Brent were working with a welder and doing some work on the trucks and probably saved the town, you know, $5,000 or more from having to send it out for service work. They actually did the work in-house, actually fabricated a piece of metal to put in the front of the truck, and I got to say, I was very impressed. Tom's been with us for 32 years, and for him to be able to do the things that he and Brent and, you know, Greg and Austin do for this town, we're very grateful and blessed to have them as employees. Aside from that, we'll cover the rest in tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Volunteer Fire Department, Tom?
Good evening. For the month of January, Long Beach Fire Department responded nine times versus 11 a year ago. Four were on the fire side, and five are on the medical side. Our average response time over the trailing 12 months continues. Fire calls is 4.4 minutes, medical calls 4.1 minutes. On typical fire calls, we average seven members on any call, fire alarm, you know, and on medical calls, we average five. I want to thank Chief Swistec as well as the Public Works Department during the month of January. Unfortunately, we were called out during that storm a couple of times for medical calls, and knowing the severity of it, we realized that it was going to be very difficult to get our members out of their own driveways, so we coordinated with the chief and the board of the plow guys, and basically said, if we get another call today, we may be calling on you guys to drive us to the scene. We knew we could get the fire truck out because that'd been plowed, but many of the members' driveways were not, so it's great coordination that's going on between not only our police department, but also our Public Works team as well. And we see them on a lot of other calls, like gas leaks and things, so that's great to have that coordination going. Couple of other things for the council to know, we have begun our firefighter one, firefighter two training for new members. We have eight people that are now enrolled in this class, including two people from other departments. We're doing our hazmat training right now. You may see a classroom in... You may see a classroom in the old school that is dedicated to this. We'll be in that classroom for probably the next eight or nine months as we go through the firefighter one, two training for new members. So you'll see a lot of people out on the streets doing a lot of different training as the weather gets nicer. But you may stumble into them on Thursday nights. They'll be over at the old school every Thursday and some Saturday mornings. Respect to the rest of the department training. Last month, we did our recertification on CPR. We do that every two years. Part of the American Red Cross has a first responder. So CPR training has been done. We did another training on electric vehicles last week on just the hazards of not only electric vehicles, but electric scooters, golf carts, bikes, and just, you know, the fire service across the world honestly is learning more and more about electric vehicles and just the dangers of batteries and how to deal with those. And so we continue to train on that. And we're learning with all the other fire departments across the world. Tonight, we're doing training on driving trucks as well as we did some thermal imaging camera training. Couple last items here. The Fire Department every year puts out keep off the ice signs. Those were put out about a month or so ago. They're all along the lakefront. Fortunately, the shelf ice is starting to go away. But if you go into Long Beach Cove, those signs are there as well. We'll keep those signs out there probably into April, not knowing when the weather will eventually turn to spring. And I think that's all I had for the Fire Department. Fire Commission, our first meeting is going to be on March 7. I believe we're going to a quarterly basis on meetings. But our first meeting is scheduled for March 7. And I believe it's in the calendar. Any questions?
Thank you, Tom.
Could I ask a quick question? And this has to do with Dave Albers. I saw him out with Ben, I think, and several other people doing the fire hydrants, digging out the fire hydrants. And I think you were looking at some kind of an automated shovel or something that could help. And my comment was just that I would think that if you, you know, appealed to the public, and I'm not sure if you want just random people trying to dig out the fire hydrants and those sticks that are on them, but, you know, on your Facebook page or something.
Yeah, we did that. Actually, thank you for bringing that up because during that, we did go on our Facebook page and reminded people to not only shovel the hydrants, but also clear the vents in your house for heaters and water heaters. Because when you have that level of snow, depending on which way the drifts are blowing, you could stop your heaters or you could also have a carbon monoxide issue. But yeah, I think we, members got out and did some of the hydrants, but there are too many hydrants. And so it's really incumbent upon neighbors to do it because, you know, you've got three feet of snow on top of your hydrant. You'd like the Fire Department to be able to get to it quick.
Thank you.
Okay, Public Works, Kendra.
We had a meeting. Yep, and Mark touched on a few things. I'll just add a couple of things. So you guys have probably seen all the potholes and stuff on St. Lawrence. So that project is just the start of it. Has kind of some figures have come in just to get the groundwork done, what needs to be done before it can be paved, that we can all drive nicely on it. So we are aware of that, is my point. And the Public Works and Mark's heading that up to get that project finished. So we are aware that there's 1,000 potholes over there. And a couple of things, and we'll get to Stop 17. And John Wall is going to touch on that because that's kind of a bigger project. But they're working on getting some quotes for a new truck. Need to replace one of the trucks. And just an aside, too, I'm learning, too, this is a new committee for me to sit on, one that I have not had that much involvement with. So I'm learning as well, all the things going on. The water tower will be painted in 2027. Well, it's ways away, but will be happening. And they're looking at some valves on the water lines in Oriole Trail that are probably going to need just some attention so we don't have an issue down at Carwick Road over that great snowstorm when everything was dug up over there. That's what happened there. They had a big water problem because of the valves, which we want to avoid having. So they're great. As you guys have all said, Tom, Brent, everyone, Greg, everyone on that department does a wonderful job. So we're lucky to have all of them. And then for the bigger project, I asked John Wall if he wants to speak and just update everybody on the progress of the Lake Shore Drive Water Service Project from 13 going east has been completed and now they're working going west. So if you want to, you can speak better than anyone to it. So if you want to give an update, that'd be great.
Yeah, so we've been progressing really well. The contractors out there work. And they actually started up with a bunch of crews, you know, which is kind of abnormal. But they had two or three crews working from the start. So they've made great progress. Originally, we anticipated this thing being a multi-month project. And the way it looks right now, they may wrap this thing up within 30 days or so. That'll help us on the cost side because our construction inspection outlay, the construction engineer has to be on site to verify materials and measure quantities and that sort of thing. So that'll reduce his exposure and that'll help us on the original quote that we had from them for cost purposes. You guys have an invoice before you for that project this evening. I sent you guys a note so you had a little bit of background. Hopefully, you had a chance to take a look at that. I'm not going to go into that whole thing. But essentially, things are rolling along really well. And if you have any questions for me, I'd be certainly happy to answer them relative to some of the more particular information on this sheet. But I think that pretty much covers it from a public standpoint. Stop 17, we're working on that one, too. We hope, the original start was projected to be somewhere around March 1. We had a proposal for a different type of structure to use on that project, which we think will help us in the long run because we hope to do similar projects along the lake on stormwater control. So we're waiting for the engineer to finally finish his analysis. Once he does that, we get to go ahead. There's about a six-week lead time on that either way, whether we go with the original bid or we go with this cost savings. It's not a huge cost savings. It's somewhere in the neighborhood of $8,000 to $10,000 for a cost savings on the structure. But if we multiply that out over time for future projects, then it's going to turn into a more significant dollar. That's why we're entertaining this change. So that project hopefully will start in about March. We'll be done, I think they're mandated to be done before the season opens up more early. But essentially, that project is moving along as well.
Just for a clarification real quick. So the project underway right now is more about the water tap project, whereas Stop 17, 18 is more of the stormwater project.
Yeah, that's precisely correct. Stop 17 is really a misnomer. That project, Stop 17's drainage project, is handling a huge watershed. It's a lot of stuff coming in from obviously homes and things like that. But the way the topography reads, there's a lot of Moon Valley and some of those areas back there that drains into that area. So and back up, you know, in 16. So really, it's from 16 to 19. So that if you come down from, if you're heading west from Stop 20, then you see how you come down that hill there on 19. So this essentially handles that water for all that area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick, Joy, one last question. For any neighbors that may find, you mentioned the potholes and mainly on this street. How would a neighbor go about kind of questioning maybe a pothole on their street? Who do they contact for that? What's best?
Probably say, yeah, just call the clerk's office. I mean, anywhere, but they could just call and leave a message and.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So call the clerk.
Yeah.
So, yeah, either Mark or the clerk's office. But essentially, Tom takes care of that. He's got a load of what they call coal patch on his little truck right now. So he's running around taking care of that sort of thing. So anybody that has and hasn't notified, they should notify the town as quick as you can because he's out trying to do that now.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, Park Board, Kendra.
Park Board had its first meeting in January with its new members. And also Joy and Anita and I, as old members, attended just to kind of do the transition. We've got Paul in the audience. He's a new member of the Park Board who's here tonight with us. So the update, so we just got an email tonight about, we're working on ADA access for Grant for Stop 15. And we just got an email, just maybe 4:00 or something, saying that some of the funding's not going to be there, which we thought. So we're going to have to dig back into redoing what we thought would be almost completely, a lot more of it paid for with a grant, that now the grant money is not there, what we thought. So that is in the process, but maybe a bit of a delay or an unfortunate news that the grant money is not as plentiful as we had hoped. So we're going to, or we, you guys, we all will have to go back and maybe redo that submission, see where we can get some more town money for that. And then, let's see, the life rings. I had a resident ask me they were missing one at Stop 29, which Mark found and Tom, it was, it had just been in Stop 20, in the storage in the maintenance center. So they're going to bring that out. It was just put there due to high water and construction that was going on there. And really, Joy just helped transition the budget process to everyone. We got them up to speed where we were with different projects. Mostly, the big thing going on there is that Stop 15 ADA access. And then I'll just take this time to say we do have an opening for one member. So it'd be a two-year term. So spread the word, anyone that's interested. There's a position open. Couple other ones that Joy may speak to later, but specifically one for the Park Board.
And it does have a residency requirement.
Yeah, and you have to be a resident for the Park Board particularly. So and anyone who wants to, you could reach out to anyone, but Joy would be the best person just to send her an email or a phone call and just ask for like a mini resume. It can be a few sentences of what you want to do, why you think you'd be a good fit. It doesn't have to be anything fancy. And that's it.
Thank you. Community Center, Anita?
Community Center met on February 5. The discussion was centered around spending, budget, needs and wants. There are heat pumps that are quite substantial in expense. So that's put to the front of the list. Also about cost and placement of an ADA equitable bathroom stall. Looking to the capital plan, meeting with Meg Collins in the future, discussing updating some visible area like the courtyard and then a review of pending leases. So we're close to having a full building, which would be great. There's still a few things that are still being moved around. And then the status of the kitchen. What exactly is the kitchen at the community center? Nobody wants to cook in there. So we're going to, someone is going to contact the Health Department and figure out what exactly we need in there and what we don't need and what we don't want to do.
Thank you. Human Resources, JD?
Sure, we met on the 24th at 1:00. It was our organizational meeting for the first meeting of the year. It came forth that our major goal this year will be an update of the handbook to get to the council before the fourth quarter. So we set up our Microsoft Teams channel this week so we can start collaborating online and getting everybody's input on that. And we're going to be making progress on that on a monthly basis.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Sorry, Meg, I skipped Budget and Finance.
Not a problem. Budget and Finance met on February 7 and discussed how we would proceed as a committee, getting everybody familiar with lots of various things. We discussed ongoing costs and upcoming costs that the committee's going to schedule a workshop to try and look at. And at the capital plan and cash reserves, some of our projections might need to be adjusted. There's some items, some items from last year, like the sewer looming that may come up this year or next year. And we closed the accounting system for 2023 and we're hoping, not hoping, but going to start providing financials and budget numbers to department heads. That's going to start happening much more quickly now that we have year-end items finished. Our accountant, Trista Hudson, is on tonight. And welcome back. Glad to have you back. And she's going to speak on some items later on the agenda. But she is there to help us along tonight. So that's all.
Thank you. Tree Board, Ellen?
Tree Board, all the leaves are off. And now we can see where everything needs to be fixed. And as you walk through, everything, branches are dropping left and right, especially if you're on the Lake Shore Drive. Anyway, we did meet on Wednesday, February 7. We, everybody has received a copy of the complete tree ordinance with the exhibits. I've talked to Chris about it. I know it's getting into the website and all that. And so we were like, that's done. Then we decided to do, we discussed and divided the duties of creating a one-page version of the tree ordinance. So like a fact sheet, like what they need to know when they move into this community or they're renovating their, you know, landscape or whatever, what the rules are about all the trees, about trees on town property. And it also has a lot of good information on what kind of trees to put into your community, into your landscape and all that. But we want to just have like a bullet one. And actually, when I was standing in the hall, I'm thinking, make a bunch of them and put them there, too, so people can pick them up. And maybe even put it on the front of the webpage once it's in there and to have people guided to the ordinance. You can tell I really want people to read this ordinance. Anyway, so and we just hope that we can get around so we don't all of a sudden see someone move in clear cut an entire lot and they're like, oops, I didn't know that. So we want to make sure that we have a reasonable expectation of our current residents and our future residents. We also then talked about another Janice Brown idea, the angel of, to do a new Welcome to Long Beach pamphlet. There's probably a lot of people that have a lot of, you know, comments on this. I was very lucky to find one that was left by the former owner of my house. And it's kind of interesting. It's not a bad thing to do and maybe update like every three or four years because it goes into the rules about fireworks, wildlife and all this. So this is like 2016, I think, the last time they did this. I think they got up to, no, less than that. So we kind of want to spearhead this and revitalize it, put the right ordinances in each of the sections. Has fireworks, you know, add some sound ordinance, you know, all that stuff, just so people would have it on hand. So it was interesting that I was writing when I told my girlfriend that she had to walk her dog on a leash. So I'm like, see, I told you. But anyway, that's what we're doing next. After we get this one-page thing done, then we're going to move on to updating that. And that's about it. So just trying to keep this little old tree committee doing stuff. So that's it. Okay?
Thank you. Wait until it gets out that Meg's going to start marrying everybody. I believe that's in there.
You can, we have to, I had to get that okay by you. You can do weddings, right? I'm not kidding you. It's in here.
I could get notarized.
Yeah, you could be doing weddings.
Thank you, Ellen. Okay, Building Commission, I'll give you the highlights. The Building Commission has had two meetings since the last council meeting on Jan. 12 and February 9. The highlights, 1514 Lake Shore Drive is at the plan review stage. They're adding a second story and a garage across the street. 2202 Hovland, citation was issued for working without a permit. Permit was approved for a new home on Mount Clare Way, Permit was approved for a new home on Mount Clare Way, but it needs to be recorded on the deed that there's a septic encroachment. Permit approved for 2611 Roslyn. 2313 Oak and Wald is at the plan review stage. There's an issue of an existing guesthouse on the lot. Uh, permit was approved for 2207 Oak and Wald for patio and landscaping, and a permit approved for 2911 Loether Way, modifying the driveway and repair and replace in addition to the residence. Uh, that's it for Building Commission, and the BZA's February meeting has been canceled. Uh, Advisory Plan Commission, Anita?
Advisory Plan Commission did not meet in January when, um, the, the committee took over and I'm the chair. It also did not meet in November and December of 2023, um, just because there were no agenda items. And Chris, um, Dr. Lemay said that I should ask you, there are minutes from the last meeting of October, and he said, just ask you, do we just hold on to those until we have a next meeting? All right. Um, and that's it?
Thank you. Uh, Building Revenue Report for January, Meg?
There were 11 permits issued totaling $567,714 with revenue of $6,400. Three electric permits issued in January totaling $374. One street cut permit with reven, with revenue of $100. Legal expenses paid in January, $5,375 to Braji, Nelson and James. There were no accounting charges paid in January, and I would entertain a motion to accept these reports.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Onto unfinished business, uh, Public Safety Building Progress Update, Mark?
The Public Safety Building is moving along as scheduled. Um, currently, they're working on drywall finishing on the interior. Um, within the next week or so, they'll begin the interior painting. The drop ceilings have not yet been installed, but the staircases leading up to the mezzanine have been completed. Majority of the plumbing, electrical, and a lot of the interior work has been completed. The exterior stone has been completed, and we will begin, um, seeing a lot more on the inside taking shape over the next, uh, six to eight weeks. Schedule of completion for the building is still late April, going into early May. Um, you'll see some additional paving work. Um, the final coat of asphalt will need to be installed probably in the month of April out in the parking lot, then the parking lot will be striped. Um, there's been some questions coming up about the parking lot between this building and the new Public Safety Building. That parking lot will be for, um, the town, its residents, and obviously, the emergency responders using both of these facilities. We're not going to be opening up to, you know, public beach parking or outside the town parking. We'll be putting up some signage, um, same process as before. There'll be a hang tag, a placard that you can get from our office. Um, each resident is entitled to get four of those hang tags. Obviously, we have much less parking back there. However, when parking is available, the residents are available to use that parking if you want to walk down to Stop 24, um, or you're visiting somebody nearby. But again, that will be for residents only. And then, um, the septic, I just want to briefly touch on that. Um, President Schmidt and I met last Thursday, um, here across the street with the La Porte County Representative of the Health Department. Julie was on site along with Soil Solutions, John McQuestion. The civil engineer staff were here as well. Uh, we walked and evaluated the current sanitary septic for this facility. We have been given the authorization by the state with their requirements of what the next step is for us to complete the design process for the sanitary septic needs for the new Public Safety Building. So Soil Solutions has been contracted to complete those steps. They will complete the design work, the civil engineering work, and they will come up with the final design that will eventually, in the next probably four weeks, will be sent back to the State of Indiana Health Department for their final review, and then, um, we should be able to receive a permit from them to move into the construction phase of the new sanitary septic, um, for the new building. Currently, we're looking at a couple of options. One is, um, there is an option where we could have a standalone system for the new building, or we could combine this building with the new building running across under Oriole with the current three-inch line that we have feeding the Presby, um, field across the street. Um, there is also discussion, we may have to put a new lift station in, or we may be able to use the current lift station. Um, a lot of these are unknowns until they look at the elevations of the pipes, that is, um, the elevation at where they are underneath the, um, topsoil. So, you know, when you say elevations, a lot of people will say, well, the ground is flat outside the town hall. That's correct, but underneath the ground, we have pipes that run, and they have to be pitched at certain, you know, degrees for the water will run and get to the lift stations and other areas. So that's why we have engineers and soil scientists working on that for us. Um, my initial thoughts, uh, when we first began this process, you know, we were hoping to get in under $50,000. Um, I think, um, that may be now, um, outside of what we imagined. It may be much higher than that. It could be as high as $75,000 to $100,000. I don't know yet. Um, I've been asked, but we won't know more until we get, um, everything back from John McQuestion and get a better idea of what needs to be, um, in the new system. So as we meet with, uh, Trista Hudson and the, uh, Capitol team and the Budget and Finance, um, we'll add a number in there to, um, budget, um, a preliminary number for the sanitary septic needs, and then come back to this council, um, with a presentation of the needs for the new building. Meanwhile, the Fire Department, the Building Commissioner, who's with us tonight, Larry Wall, have been advised that we may not have the septic system in place by the time we have the new building completed, the first week of May. Um, so we'll have to come up with some, you know, solutions for that as well. And then, uh, the Health Department is well aware of the time restrictions that we are under. We are asking for, um, you know, some, uh, due regard from the state to get this turned around in a fast, um, fashion for us. However, we are at the mercy of the State of Indiana when it comes to that. So I'll keep everybody, um, updated through email as I have to this point, as I learn more information on the sanitary septic.
Thank you. Uh, MS-4 ordinance update. Uh, Chris was kind enough to send us all a draft of the MS-4 ordinance this morning, so I think we all have some nice late-night reading, uh, before the next meeting, so.
Yeah, I just want to remind everybody that we really need to try to get that approved, uh, and if you're so inclined to approve it. Um, as we've talked about before, there, there really isn't much that you have leeway. Uh, the language where there was leeway in terms of inclusion or exclusion has already been considered by Larry, who is your MS-4 coordinator, I guess for lack of a better description, and had to go through training, et cetera, so this is something that is required, um, for many reasons, one of which is to continue to be able to receive benefits such as CCMG funds, those kinds of things. So, um, if, if there becomes an issue with regard to being a bit overwhelming, it, it is voluminous. If you need, um, some specifics, maybe, uh, I'm not in favor, always have suggested more meetings, but maybe a workshop at some point, once Larry finishes his review of what we've sent, because he's reviewed, he's reviewed it quite a bit as well, um, if there are any further changes, but then I suggest we get it up for the public too before the next meeting, just so everybody can also fall asleep to it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Stop 15 ADA Grant Update, Kendra already discussed that. Uh, I'll be setting up a meeting with Jeff Altman from the, uh, from Global Engineering and Chief Swistec, so we can talk about what we need to move forward on that. Lake Shore Sewer, your name next to this, Kendra, but I don't know.
There is no update. My recommendation with it, we take it off the agenda unless, um, Kendra or Shannon and I reintroduce it, um, there isn't any further development right now, so that's your call in terms of.
Sounds good to me. Let's take it off the agenda. Thank you. Uh, Ordinance, repealing the ordinance, establishing term limits for appointments to town commissions, boards and committees. This is something we can pass in one reading, or suspend the rules?
So let, let's talk about that. If you are inclined to do that, normally there are two readings by town code to, to pass an ordinance. If you do not have a unanimous vote to do that, then you'll need to do it in two read, two readings. So you could do the first one tonight, again, by title only, so there could be a motion. So initially, it would be, be to entertain a motion if, if the desire collectively were to pass it in one evening, um, to have a motion and second, and a unanimous vote to suspend your rules and approve on first and second reading in the same night as the introduction.
Okay. So I guess first we need to see, is there a motion to repeal this ordinance?
Is it unanimous first? We need to know if it's unanimous.
So if you're asking, is there a, a motion, or anybody who wants to make a motion to suspend your rules and in favor of passing this, or considering this, and, um, suspending your rules and considering this for passage in, in the night of introduction?
Okay, I'm fine either way. I'm okay if we do it in two readings. I'm, you know, I, I don't have a problem with that.
Do you want to make a motion that, to see if we are unanimous in, um, in, uh, repealing the ordinance? Can we do that, is that, or?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, a motion?
I would make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye?
Should we have comments?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
You can.
Comments?
Well, only because I start, you know, I, I questioned it last meeting, and I feel like this is like a mom and a dad behind closed doors conversation, so it's kind of, but I, I started looking at our committee appointments, and I started to go through where it said, you know, these are appointed by president, these are appointed by council, and I just questioned some of them, because if we look at what was on here and then compare it to, let's call it an Indiana code, where they appoint things, where they say it's council, not president. So I just want to make sure, because the conversation would be, if these are committee positions appointed by president, president changes, positions could change, so term limits wouldn't matter. But.
I don't really understand.
Well, so if, if a position, so here you have Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals. Three citizens are president-appointed.
Okay.
So term wouldn't apply necessarily, because as the president changes, the people could change.
Whether the president changes or not, they finish their term.
But if we're going in here and appealing and saying, we're not going to have term limits?
No, no, no. We had those term limits. These, this term limit is, was the, uh, ordinance they passed last year or the year before, which, uh, anything that, you couldn't be on a committee longer than eight years. That was their term limits. You know, so they just didn't want people on committees. And we only have two committees that have terms, so it didn't apply to any of the annual ones, you know, the term limits, it only applied to the BZA and the APC, because they're the only ones that had terms.
Just to offer clarity, I, I think that that sheet, which has been passed around generation to generation, I'm kidding, but, um, whether there are or aren't flaws in that, I don't think are probably related to this ordinance, the decision for you, and you're not obligated, you don't have to vote to do it all in one reading tonight. You, if you have a unanimous vote, you can consider it tonight. It is repealing, which was introduced by Mr. John Stone, with the thought, again, that the theory behind it was that you'd get more people involved, and that you guys have had that discussion of pros and cons and transparency and publishing notice and trying to get people involved. So that ordinance that, that, uh, that was passed in 2022, overall, established term limits, and then some of them are, some of those limits would be superseded, uh, by, for instance, BZA, that's state code mandated, right? There are other things that are, so this won't affect your cheat sheet, though.
So as long as, right, state code would absolutely take precedence over what were the terms, that's fine, then that's understood.
Yes.
Perfect. So we can go back, that was my only conversation, that we're making sure we're following.
So you have a motion, a second, so we have a discussion.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Oh, you're opposed?
I am.
Yeah, so, so.
Because if what was brought up earlier about giving people.
Oh, okay.
Time to see the agenda, talk about items, is, I would like to, this is a pro and con about putting public comments at the first part, so I'd like, I'd like to move this to a second reading.
So then what we.
I don't think we were voting on, doing it all in one reading, we were just voting to see how we felt about that. I'm fine if we don't do it.
Yeah, so now it'd be appropriate if, to have a motion to approve it on first reading by title only, which is, if, if that's the inclination, then you can go through and just, you simply pass it on first reading and hold it over to the next meeting.
Okay, I'll make that motion to pass it on first reading. Establishing term limits for appointments to town commissions, boards and committees, repealing the ordinance.
Second?
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Wait, I'm sorry, now I'm confused. We're saying, we're saying this is, you're voting to do it on first reading, we need to hold it over.
Yeah, it automatically does. By virtue of you not voting unanimously tonight. To approve it all in one meeting, she made a motion to approve it on first reading, the second meeting would be held at the next, or a subsequent meeting.
So any opposed?
So we're voting on this going to march?
To approve it. Now, you're, hold on, hold on, hold on. You have to approve it in two readings, right? So you're approving it the first, for the first reading? So it's just part of the formalities of approving it, so you're approving the first reading this evening? You don't need a unanimous vote, so, all right.
And then have another vote on it in March?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, all in favor, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. No, but I still have, I still have a comment on it. I think, um, Shannon, just the, the point of it that was made before was to limit people, and that's why that ordinance was, and was agreed to. There is absolutely nothing done by councils that I have ever seen that would limit anybody wanting to serve anywhere. So the fact that we're repealing this continues to keep it open to people, to reach out to anybody on the town council, to our town administrator, to say, what about that committee? To come to meetings and say, gee, this looks like a good fit for me. So all this ordinance is doing is actually opening it up again, because sometimes in this little town, you cannot find people that want to work on committees. So what it's doing, instead of slapping someone's hand and saying, you've been on that committee for so many years, and now you have to go away. Or what it says is, well, we don't have anybody to fill your position, so even though we want you to go away, you can't go away because we need you to stay. So this doesn't really limit anybody. What it does is, it continues to, and, and I continue to say, people, if you're interested, reach out, all of us can give names. We have openings that have been listed, we have asked for names, and so, um, this town, as far as I've always seen, is very open to welcoming people. Send your mini resume, and please, so this ordinance simply opens it up again. I thought it was done in a divisive manner when this ordinance was entered. It was clearly aimed at certain people. So that's my comment.
Okay, that brings us to committee openings.
Perfect segue.
We do have these, I think, posted on the website. We have a four-year term, which has a residency requirement on the BZA. We have a four-year term, uh, on the APC. We have a one-year term on the Community Center Working Committee, and, uh, on the park board, we have a two-year term, which also has a residency requirement. Um, I think these are all on the website. I'm not sure about the park board, because I just.
Not yet.
Recently.
I will remove the Police Commission one-year term, if that's been filled?
Um, I think we're going to fill it tonight.
Okay. And then the park board I will add.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, yeah, if anyone knows of anyone who is interested in serving on a committee, we welcome everybody, so I, I would say, bring them forward. No Feeding Deer Ordinance Draft, Kendra?
So, um, you guys all got a copy of an ordinance that I, um, asked Chris to draft, which he did, and so, uh, just for the public's, um, information, uh, it was my intention to, um, limit intentional feeding of deer, big bags of corn, big salt licks, things like that. So, um, it's not meant to, you know, it doesn't affect bird feeders, anything like that, but, um, I, I think, no matter what side of the fence you're on about deer, I think everyone is in agreement that there is a problem, and that feeding the deer is not good, um, whether you are, whether you want to say you're pro-deer or not really against the deer, but, um, no one thinks that, that I have found, and I definitely, um, through my research, and don't think that it serves any benefit, uh, to the town, to the residents, or even the deer. So draft, we drafted an ordinance, and we'd like to keep it on the website for a month, um, on open public comment anytime, at the next meeting, email us, talk, whatever you want. Um, it'll be shared, but basically, without reading, um, well, I'll just read it, it's not too long, so I'll, I'll skip the legal jargon, so just so you can get the sense of it. But, um, "A person commits an offense if the person intentionally feeds deer or makes food available for consumption by deer on private or public property within the corporate boundaries of the town of Long Beach. A person shall be presumed to have intentionally fed deer or made food available for consumption by deer if the person places food or causes food to be placed on the ground outdoors or on any outdoor platform that stands fewer than five feet above the ground. Uh, for the purpose of this section, the following items shall constitute and be defined as food unless otherwise excluded: corn, fruit, oats, hay, nuts, wheat, alfalfa, salt blocks, grain, vegetables and commercially sold wildlife and/or livestock feed. Exceptions, this does not apply to a law enforcement officer, veterinarian, town employee, federal or state wildlife official, or property owner who is authorized by the." Indiana Department of Natural Resources to treat, manage, capture, trap, hunt, or remove deer who is acting within the scope of a person's authority. This, I think the rest, just that kind of repeats what I already already said. And then just to summarize, the first offense would just be a written letter or some sort of communication from the town documenting that you, the person's been warned. Just let them know, maybe they didn't know about it. Again, not trying to like, you know, gain any money from this, from the town or whatever. But then in order to enforce it, I think to make people realize, you know, it is a true ordinance. After the first offense, which should be a written letter, there'd be a $500 fine, and then it would double after that if it continued. So I think I'd, do I need to make a motion? To put it on the this is just a draft right now, so, okay.
Just asking for consideration and making sure the public has time. As you guys have indicated, you'd like to do that, give some feedback and then be prepared next month, a discussion.
Okay.
Could you
Comment.
Could you speak, Krista, how the research that went into this, looking at other ordinance around our area? What was your process in drafting this?
Well, Kendra had a pretty extensive one, and then some discussions was really scaling it back. And it was hurt crack at it in terms of saving time and efforts. But it was looking at other communities. I I haven't found any necessarily apples to apples that are local. But yeah, that is based on one and out of Bloomington. So it did seem to, in communications with Kendra, be the least intrusive, for lack of a better description. And that I know that's a relative things because some may take great umbrage with this. But it seemed to be the least intrusive and hit the main points without being overly prohibitive.
Great, thanks.
So are we saying we're going to put it on the website in this form? Or are we going to be able to comment on it? I mean, I.
We put it on the website in this form just because we have it, but then leave it open and still comment and can change it. Send it, any comments in in March, we can, I can gather comments. So if you have any changes now or later, just send them my way and I'll send them to Chris and we can revise it and then do a.
Well, or we don't want to keep using Chris's legal time to keep revising it, so I'm.
Send them to me, maybe, and I'll.
Yeah, I mean, I just.
Give Chris the once over before.
I don't want to be arrested for some corn being on my lawn, so I gotta be careful about it.
No, that's why, but that's why it's exactly speaks that out, that that's not the intention. That it's explicitly intentionally feed, you know, bags of corn, salt licks, things like that. It's not, that's why that's.
I don't know, I see corn, I gotta be careful. I am sorry, Kendra, I'm just, I will look at it and I'll get back to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Town welcome signs, JD.
Yeah, I don't know how this got got on here. This is a, this is a career from last meeting.
I thought we were moving on with welcome signs. No?
Okay. Revising them, no?
Well, I think there was discussion about how how to not removing current before you had a plan for the next.
Right.
Is my recollection of how you left it off.
Yeah, open for discussion. We've had feedback again from residents and saying, is there different ways to do it? Whether it's list of the things that would be like, no parking on public streets, no contractors must register, the speed limits, kind of consolidating some other people in maybe going back to the old sign, the kind of having they said a totem pole type of, type of, type of idea, but the concept is maybe consolidation of some signs to ensure that our codes can be enforced. And maybe bringing back the more classic sign, but just those are just some ideas. Whether the
Do you think we need like to put together a committee or something to discuss?
How did the last sign get developed that are up now that have welcome to Long Beach all contractors? Was that just town? Was that?
I think park board, we were on it too.
I can sort of summarize it started just because the park board seemed to be kind of the catchall for at the time for before Mark came for anything that needed beautification. We tried to help out and just had a really active committee. So I worked somewhat hard, did a lot of, tried to find different designs in different towns and took pictures and met, Mark and I met with people when he did come on board. And before he came on board, I met with people. And ran into just different issues and then problems, too expensive, or couldn't come up with a cohesive thing that anyone liked. And then because I think the contractor thing was becoming an issue, it was more, Mark just took that over and said, let's just get some signs up and put, you know, this will be cost effective, this will be efficient, it'll get the job done. Welcome to Long Beach at all the entrance points, and it has a contractor thing. So it's definitely too big of a project to give to the town administrator. I mean, it's something I think if if someone's passionate about changing it, that they do it and head it up and get a committee because it does seem to have a lot of public people care, you know, like it'll be something that you want to get input back from other people. So whether that person who wants to head it up asks for people to come to the meeting or send feedback or whatever, because we tried to do that on the park board and got some feedback from meetings if someone would attend the meeting, but mostly it was just.
But there was also, there's also history well before that.
Yeah.
So there is also, there is a lot of history behind the signs. So there was history well before park board got involved and Mark Swistek got involved, so.
But Mark did that one with repertory.
Yes.
I think, and then, so it's there, I think. And I was on Zoom the last meeting and it was a little hard for me to hear, but I think like in current form, it's there. But I'm all for changing it too. I don't want to be on the committee necessarily to head it up, only because it doesn't bother me that much. But I'm willing to help. And I, because I did go through the process of meeting with probably three separate people getting prices. And the ideas never got passed or accepted. So I've, my ideas apparently aren't good, so somebody else can share. Maybe they'll go over better.
Yeah.
A lot of opinions.
Yeah, there's so many opinions on the signs.
That part for certain, lots of opinions about signs in town. Yeah, if people are interested in continuing discussion and brainstorm about not just, you know, the welcome signs and signage in general, yeah, reach out to me. We'll start a conversation and see, see where it goes to find, we have, we have, we have an aesthetic piece of it, we have enforcement piece, there's a, there's a lot of dynamics to discuss. But if people are interested, send me an email and continue the conversation.
You might regret that.
And it's also not in the budget. So there we go, it's not in the budget.
Can we get that on the website to contact JD? Can we put that on the website to contact JD?
Sure.
I'll jump on that one, and I think we can recruit the tree board when they do their new pamphlet, Welcome to Long Beach. We'll find some synergies.
You think it's easy, like, do you think this sign's good? And I had so many signs I was so proud of, and everyone was like, oh, that's so ugly. I was like, oh, God, okay. So try another one. No, that's not good either. I'm like, all right.
I don't think there's going to be an expectation that's going to be easy. I think we're going to have 1,100 different opinions on how to do this.
I just wanted to share, I work with another town who's redoing their signs. And they have been working with the high school trades, who has been involved in in designing and is going to do the construction. So just a suggestion that might might be a little help for everybody. But your community is a little bit different in terms of the ultimate design of those signs.
I'll lower the vote to 1,099, not 1,100. And I would say just leave them as they are. So don't come to me looking for my vote.
John.
At the, well, I'll talk to Jeff line, I'm wondering, because there's the, yeah.
Okay, rainy day fund transfer, JD.
Yeah, this is just a general discussion. I know, Trista, thank you for joining us tonight. It's good to see you as well. My reading of the ordinance says that we have a deadline, but I think it's really more about a general discussion about, general discussion about kind of our finances and any transfers and how the process would work in general.
May I do something before I start or?
Well, I, I have the information that you had sent me, which I did not distribute. So I, I think if you want to explain that, it might be better coming from you than me reading it.
Sure, at that time. A few things. JD is wrong and right at all at the same time. In reference to the timeline, the town's ordinance was established during the rainy day, it was done back in 2004, I believe it was. And at that time, the statute, and then the town ordered to reflect statute. But at March 31st, I think, was the deadline for let me pull that up really quickly. For deposits to be made or transfers, you know, transfers on the general fund to rainy day funding, a deposit in the rainy day fund. The statute no longer requires that kind of deadline to be the case. And in fact, would allow any time in the year for a transfer to be made from a different fund to the rainy day fund. Instead, it's based more on first of all, what is authorized in the ordinance, so we should make a few amendments to it. Secondly, then, during this current year of 2024, it could be up to 15% of the essential cash balance of the town. And I will circle back to the essential in a moment. And then it looks, that 15% is toward the annual budget as far as making that calculation. When I say essential, we will talk about going forward what funds we can transfer from to the rainy day. The rainy day statute is still very broad and says any. However, there are a few statutes, such as a motor vehicle highway fund statute, that very specifically limit the purpose of that fund and essentially supersede the rainy day fund to say the only expenses that can be used from the motor vehicle highway fund are for motor vehicle highway regulated or approved expenses by the state, which are obviously your road to street repairs and creation and construction. A local road to street also has a state restriction, and we think the CCD fund, we need to check on that. Generally, though, from the town's operating perspective, the general fund really is the fund that has your available cash balance, operating balance there. So what I would like to do is get into some more specific numbers with the Budget Finance Committee and then have a better actual proposal, both for animated ordinance, which I'll consult with Krista on, and then also some actual numbers for the Budget Finance Committee to review and then bring to council at the next meetings here coming up. Either later this month or then for council meeting in March. It's important to also consider this transfer in light of our capital plan, as well as in light of, of course, the kind of reason that we want to keep in the fund. Respectively, general fund typically, if you can keep 20% operating balance, that's great. So you have some cash on hand to get you through from one tax draw to the next. And so it's kind of a lot of information about for the moment, but we can talk about it more and get into more detail with the Budget Finance Committee. Oh, the other item to consider as well, of course, is the investment. How do we want this to relate to the future certificate deposit investments that are on behalf of the town? Bearing in mind that money in the rainy day fund can be out in as CD investment. They don't have to be exclusive, they can be inclusive and collective. We just need to keep in mind in relation to those CDs, as I get off track for just a moment, why we might need to use some of the money. So if we invest the rainy day money that we know is maybe going to be used for our capital item, then let's make sure that the CD matures in time to be able to have that cash liquidated. So all teams, layered cake, but very doable. And with a little bit of good conversation, I think it'll be on a great track.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that. I appreciate that very much. And just to clarify, is the 15% that we'd be able to allocate, is that do, is that just in 2024? And then we'll go back to 10% in 2025?
Right, that's in the last year of our COVID exception, that the state legislature allowed a chief of the restaurant or a deputy commissioner to make an appointment. And it works back to the first starting January 1 of 2025.
Great. And again, to clarify that our ordinance will need amending so that it can happen anytime throughout the year. Excellent.
As long as a few other little ones too we can talk about. And it's not the drastic, but just to bring things up, it's 20 years old and just needs a little bit of shaking and having occasion in every community.
Perfect, thank you.
I have one question, can you spend the rainy day fund on anything? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
I need to invoice that your general funds money on. And it does, as long as there are local ordinance, we're fresh back, which is first of all, so yes, this is.
Okay, thank you. Okay, new business, general election costs invoice from Le Park County for $6,513.15. That was for the election we just had, correct?
Yes, and talking briefly with Trista today, we can possibly take, put those, that, the cost of these funds into the CED legal services. Yeah, I think that's a good spot for it. Or there's some money in rainy day. There was one other place, Trista.
River, Riverboat Fund.
Oh, Riverboat, yeah.
Oh, Riverboat, yeah.
So the state at current now is budgeted in the legal services, but this is a similar item to that in a way. And I think transferring just a little bit from one line to another. If you wanted to build a track that was the midlife to next month specifically, we could just create a little line for that and transfer a little bit of the budget to that secondary line. The current rainy day fund does have a balance of about 53,000 in it. It would be nice to keep it there. The Riverboat Fund has a significant amount of cash and has some, some balance there that we could pull out and not really truly affect the capital plan all that much.
Do we need a motion to approve paying this $6,500?
It's probably over the threshold that would need a motion.
And we don't have to decide where it's coming from, you will, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Civic training for the clerk treasurer purchase agreement for $1,200.
This is again right at the threshold, probably may not have needed to come before you. It's training on the accounting system for myself. And hopefully, my deputy would also get the training along with me.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Hiring of a building inspector.
Currently in the building department, there's an open position for the part-time building inspector. That vacancy is from 2023. We've been interviewing for that position. We received 20 applicants. We interviewed five individuals for that position. The interviews were conducted by the building commissioner Larry Wall, myself and the building department office manager, Honor Adam. Out of the five individuals, we are recommending that the town council move forward with the hiring of Carter Varza. Carter has work experience as a senior project supervisor in engineering, where he currently was working part-time, working on some indot projects. Previously, he was also a project supervisor for the Indiana Department of Transportation within their construction department. Previous to that, he was the maintenance foreman at the Indiana State Prison. Previous to that, he was the maintenance foreman at the Indiana State Prison, where he did carpentry, plumbing, electrical, and other tasks for a period of approximately 10 years there. He then worked at the Westfield Correctional Center. He was in the building, he was the building trades teacher for the Westfield Correctional Center, where he had taught several of the individuals there, the building trades, construction. And then also, he worked as a carpentry foreman from 1995 to 2000 at the Indiana State Prison. So he has teaching experience, carpentry experience. All of his references, referrals were all verified, background check was verified, criminal history check was verified, and he has passed the pre-employment drug screening process as well. So in speaking to Commissioner Larry Wall, it is his recommendation in mind that we move forward with the hiring of Carter. He is a New Buffalo resident, lives nearby, currently also working part-time, driving school buses for the New Buffalo School Corporation, where he also needed to pass a criminal investigation background to be able to drive buses. So he comes well qualified. And again, the salary ordinance for this position has the salary at $29.99. He would be a part-time general employee, not receiving full-time benefits. And I don't know if Commissioner Wall has anything he would like to add. Larry, if you want to come forward. If not, go ahead, Larry. Yeah, if you have a couple of comments.
You have to talk to the mic, Larry.
Sorry.
State your name and address, please.
Oh, it's off now, Larry. There you go.
Larry Wall, 3023 Mayfield Way. As Mark said, we interviewed a lot of people. We didn't them out. There were a couple of really good ones. The thing that was really good about this guy is, we, one of the questions we asked everybody was, which I know you guys probably can't believe that this happens, but what would happen if you had a combative contractor or a resident? And his prison background was pretty good, but that's a, that's a big thing. And is, we said to everybody that we interviewed, this position is, you're the enforcement, you're the police officer, you're the cop, you're the guy that goes out and everybody's mad at him. So he had a fantastic demeanor. We wanted them to start tomorrow, if you guys approve him, but he's got some irons in the fire, and he will either start Friday or Monday. But yeah, I highly recommend that we hire him. We need somebody. I guess that's it, unless anybody has any questions.
Thanks. Just glad you found somebody. It takes a little bit off your plate.
Thank you, Larry.
I would make a motion to approve Carter as the new building inspector.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Welcome Carter. Hiring of a second deputy marshal, we already did that, right?
Correct.
Is there another Matt out there?
Yeah. Any more Mads in the audience? Police vehicle lease, Mark?
Last week on Wednesday, I shared a pretty detailed email with you explaining the total fleet layout for the Long Beach Police Department, which is a total of seven vehicles. I inventoried that for you, that we have one 2023 F-150 police responder truck, three 2020 Ford Explorers, two 2016 Ford Explorers, and one 2014 Ford Taurus Sedan. In recent years, police vehicles, as with the fire service as well, finding vehicles to fit our first responder needs has been very, very difficult, to say the least. Our police vehicles come with a beefed-up alternator, beefed-up braking package, they're pursuit rated, they're calibrated to a certain spec as well, so they're built for the police industry. LaPort Chrysler here in LaPort County has recently built up their police fleet. They've also began to have an upfitting service where they will now provide you with the vehicle, and they'll also put on all the emergency lights, the sirens, the computer mounts, the gun mounts, everything that's needed, so that when the vehicle leaves the LaPort Chrysler lot, the only thing we really have to do is put the graphics on the outside of the vehicle. Other than that, the vehicle's ready for the road, more or less, they call it ready for the road package. Today, Deputy Vopat, who you met earlier, started his first patrol shift in his 2020 police Explorer that we issued him. And as I rode with him this morning, his transmission is now skipping in first and second gear and only has just shy of 40,000 miles. So it's going to be going in the shop here real quick, because I'm afraid it's probably going to need a transmission and should be under warranty still. So that's going in very quickly. So what happens is when we take a vehicle off the road, for instance, last, last summer, the 2020 Ford Explorer that I'm driving was in the shop for a little over, I think it was eight days. So when my vehicle's out of service, I then have to go into one of the reserve vehicles, and then the reserve officers and our part-time officers that work for us, they don't have a vehicle to utilize. So luckily, last year, when mine went down in the summer, we put one of the guys on ATV, and he patrolled the wonderful town of Long Beach on an ATV, because that's all we had for him. So in front of you tonight is a proposal, and it's a very important proposal, because we, your police department, need vehicles, which are mobile offices to do our jobs. So what I'm proposing is that after 2014, if anybody would like to see the vehicle, it's parked across the street. We have a 2014 Ford Taurus sedan. It's got a little over 93,000 miles across the street. The last time we traded one of those vehicles, we received approximately $2,500 in trade on the vehicle. And the last 2013 Ford Taurus we had, we lost the transmission on it just shy of 80,000 miles. The one across the street has some maintenance issues on the horizon. LaPort Chrysler has offered us $6,000 in trade-in value for that vehicle. The proposal before you tonight is to allow the Long Beach Police Department to enter into a lease slash purchase proposal with LaPort Chrysler, where we would be leasing a 2024 Dodge Durango. The lease payment on that vehicle would be 36 months at $998.55 per month. As I indicated, we would receive $6,000 in trade-in for the vehicle across the street, so that would be the first six payments of this year. If we signed the lease the first day of March, we wouldn't owe the lease payment until the first day of April. So therefore, we would have a total of approximately nine lease payments for this year. So six of those lease payments would come from the, or the trade-in vehicle, and so we would only need an additional $3,000 out of this year to pay for that lease on that vehicle. So you'll have 36 months, $998.55. That comes to a total of $35,947.80 roughly. And then the buyout to purchase that vehicle after three years, if the vehicle's in good running order and that, the town could purchase the vehicle for $30,936.21. So that brings your total purchase price for that vehicle at $66,884.1. And that would be the vehicle and all the emergency equipment that goes on that vehicle. To install that equipment this year, I would be using funds from our general operating budget to pay for the install of the equipment onto that vehicle. And then next year, I would approach the council again to get rid of one of the 2016 vehicles that we have, which by then will be climbing up closer to 90-some thousand miles. And that is the proposal before you tonight. And I would welcome any questions. Before that, I would say, you ask yourselves, how do we pay for this additional $3,000 this year? We're bringing in an additional $9,476 this year in the increases in our two police contracts that we have with both Dunland Beach and the town of Michiana Shores. And as I stated earlier, part of those contracts, the monies that we receive from those other communities pays not only our salaries, but also assists the town in purchasing equipment, vehicles, training, everything a normal police department would need. And then also, we have the additional lit income tax that we could take from to pay the extra $3,000 for this year. And then that vehicle, just for full transparency, this first lease would come, obviously, as you've seen tonight, we have a very young police department. I wouldn't encourage giving this vehicle to our youngest officer, so therefore, my 2020 vehicle would pass down. I would take the 2024 lease, especially since I put lower miles on, because we're limited to 15,000 miles a year. And then my 2020 Ford Explorer would push down to one of the younger officers. And then next year, the 2016 would be traded in, and then another Durango, which would then go to our next senior officer, which would be Mitchell Sights next year. He's got five years with the department, and then next year, he would receive the next Durango. So that's just kind of my explanation where the vehicles would be going. So any questions?
No questions?
Chief, who's the, well, we read the email, and thank you for being thorough. The lease proposal was not attached. Who is the leasing company?
It would be LaPort Chrysler, who would be leasing directly from a LaPort Chrysler Dodge Jeep.
Chrysler Financial?
I would assume, I can get that answer for you, but it's coming through the Chrysler dealership. And I would add that, just for the public, as you guys are aware, LaPort Chrysler is leasing pretty much to every LaPort County law enforcement agency, currently sheriff's department, and all the other smaller towns. And I would assume it would be financial, but I will get that answer for you.
And is your request here for Joy to enter into the lease agreement once it's proposed? And who will be reviewing it, just as a set of eyes? Generally, we get a, for anybody who wants to do a contract, we see the contract before we give approval to it. Will anybody be taking a look at the contract before Joy signs it?
If approved tonight, I can have the contract forwarded to our town attorney for review and recommendation back to the council, so the vote tonight could be, you know, with the pending approval of the review by the attorney. So.
That's your pleasure. It can be.
$66,000, I'd like another set of eyes on it. Yes.
Yeah, I'm good. Are you good with Chris looking at it?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I would make that motion to.
I'm sorry, may I ask a question real quick?
Sure, sure.
Mark, in the capital plan, we have notation for current lease card leases, and I think that the last payment on at least one of those in 2025. So this new lease is not replacing any of the current leases, this will be an additional one completely, right?
Correct. The one that you're referring to is for two of the 2020 vehicles. There was a loan taken out in 2021, so you have the payment this year, just shy of 20,000 for both vehicles, and then one more payment next year. And then the buyout on this vehicle would not be until three years from now. There'd be a buyout on this vehicle.
Which we probably could finance if we wanted to, again, to extend it.
True.
And then to that question, sorry to interrupt with another one, but just to clarify, as we're talking about obligations within, in the fleet, right? The four ATVs, we don't owe any money there, the boat, we don't owe anything there, the motorcycle, we don't owe anything there, the rest of the fleet?
We own all of our fleet, except for the two 2020 Ford Explorers that we have. A little over a year ago, the town council approved the purchase of the 2023 F-150, and that was paid in full. And the purchase price on that vehicle, just for the vehicle, was $49,600, but that was paid in full. So yeah, nothing else is owed upon, all ATVs and motorcycle we own.
And Trista, when we take on these leases that are technically liabilities, does this bump against, bump up against our statutory debt limit, or is it other than that?
No, no, that statutory debt limit applies only to bonds, such as the GL bond that is still active. It does not actually apply to public safety bond, because the building corp is involved there. So the only thing that's affecting your statutory debt borrowing limit is that GL bond.
Okay.
And my one question, so Mark, you mentioned, again, the police package. Your revised quote that'll come back will have that final, because it said approximately this?
Yes, I have that police package here tonight, actually, and for the lighting, it looks like it's going to be a little over $9,000 for that. And then, what did I put in here for you? Do you have the number there, Shannon? I'm just glazing over the.
Yeah, I was just looking. It was, it's a long email.
$14,549, Mark, which included your computer gun mounts.
Yeah. Yeah, I actually, I was able to get that reduced for us. So the new price is $13,102.88. So I was able to shave an extra $1,400 off of there.
Plus the nine?
No, I shaved off from that initial one that Trista just spoke about.
Yeah.
I was able to get them to come down on the labor on the vehicle, because I had done some comparable work and showed them, we saved an additional 1,400 cents. I sent you this email.
Yeah.
Yeah, the 9,000 is, yeah.
Okay.
In the lease itself, I'm sorry. So, yeah. The only thing I'd be spending out of my operating budget for this year is going to be a little over 4,000 to cover the install on all the equipment, and then I'll have to buy a radar for the new vehicle, because of the radar unit that's in the 2014 is over 10 years old. It's outdated equipment, and so we need to get a new vehicle speed radar in that unit.
So then, can I just ask for then, to have this moved to the March, and you'll have the radar, you'll have the final quote for the light package, you'll have the lease for the vehicle? So it's one total sum?
I hate to move it, just for the simple fact that they're holding the car for us now, because they have a 2024 there. When I was touring their inventory last week, myself, the chief from Trail Creek and the chief from Chesterton were there. St. Joe County just picked up 12 cars, Notre Dame University picked up five, and they're holding this one for me till tomorrow, and then otherwise, they'll release this one, and somebody else will probably buy it before March.
I think it's also important, Chief, you did look at more expensive models that were purchased by a previous marshal in town. So I think that you went middle of the road.
So.
I appreciate that.
That's a great point. And so what I did is I looked at the V6 model, and I actually took it out for a drive. And then I looked at the V8 model with the Hemi train, or the Hemi engine in it. And when I brought the V8 Hemi back, I told them, put it in the back of the lot, it's too fast for the town of Long Beach, and it costs about, costs about $3,600 more than a V6. So being financially sound for the town, there's, I can't justify spending $3,600 more for a Hemi V8. It uses more fuel. Yes, we would get more on trade at the point where we trade it in eight years from now, but we just don't need a big V8 engine in the town of Long Beach. So the V6, the price is at $47.8 for just the vehicle. And I think once Chris reviews the lease and everything, we're still coming in under what we spent on the last vehicle that we purchased in 2023, because that vehicle was $49.6, and then the graphics, the lighting, everything else, we spent over $70,000 for that vehicle. This vehicle here, all in, you're going to be at, what is it, 60, I got it right here for you, $66,884. So.
$884.
And then also, like I said, the trade, the trade-in value, I did Kelley Blue Book on the vehicle we have across the street, the 2014, in good condition, I came up with $4,500. They're giving us $6,000 in trade. So we're making out on the trade as well, in my opinion. So.
Any more questions? I would make a motion to approve the lease with the caveat that Chris looks at the contract before anything is signed.
And before there's any second, maybe add to that authorizing you to execute documents, if that's the council's pleasure, on behalf of the council.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Police commissioner appointment, Mark?
Currently, we have a vacancy for a police, police commissioner. It's a three-member board. The particular opening that we have for appointment at this time is the appointment by recommendation of the membership of the Long Beach. of the membership of the Long Beach Police Department. Therefore, the membership has notified me that they would like to recommend to the town council that the council appoint Brent Soler, who is a Long Beach resident and also a employee of the town. I have checked with our town attorney, and Chris has advised that there is not a conflict if this board so chooses to appoint Brent to the police commission. I will say on Brent's behalf, he's a dedicated town employee, previously served Laporte County as the emergency 911 director, so he's very familiar with emergency services, not only police, fire, and EMS. And I have spoke to Brent personally, and I would also second the recommendation of the membership of the department, that we would like to recommend Brent for appointment to the police commission opening.
I would make a motion that we appoint Brent Soler to the police commission. Do we have a second for discussion? Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Radar speed limit sign, Chassleton Drive. Chief?
Little over a week ago, I shared an email with you with information related to radar speed enforcement signs. This particular radar speed sign would take the place of an existing speed limit sign that is on Chassleton Drive, just north of Hacienda. What this sign would do is, as you approach, each summer, typically, you'd see our radar trailer that's out there. It's very large, it's cumbersome. In place of that, this sign would be able to track a vehicle's speed as it is approaching. It has the capability of, the software keeps track of the number of vehicles, the speed that they are passing, and can provide us with some traffic enforcement data as well. Our officers then could be positioned in an area nearby where they could monitor the sign and do some traffic enforcement on Chassleton. We've approached the Laporte County Prosecutor, Sean Fagan, and he has agreed to cover the cost of the sign. So therefore, there is no cost to the Long Beach community to have this sign installed other than we will supply the post and the manpower to put up the sign. Tom and Brent from our street department would take on that task. And it is our recommendation that we place one of these signs on Chassleton Drive in place of one of the current speed limit signs that are there.
Any questions? Okay, I would make a motion that we place the radar speed limit sign on Chassleton Drive.
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm gonna, well, I don't know, comment, maybe? I definitely like the idea, so replacing one, maybe two, speed limit signs, because I think it will draw attention along the way. But this is going to go back to, I think, the first comment. It would be good to post maybe this idea or thought on the town website, allow the community to see what we're thinking, what we're doing in advance, to, you know, just allow comments to be made, but just for future, you know, it's...
There's no urgency on this request. I mean, I'll have to contact the sign vendor, get it ordered, get it installed. I mean, at the soonest at this point, I probably wouldn't even have it installed till maybe May. So there's no rush on this particular request, so I'm open to any suggestions by the council.
I definitely think before summer would be valuable, because I think come summer, we do get a lot more higher traffic, and so it is a good reminder for those visiting and coming into town.
So are you saying you want it on the website so people can comment on whether they want it put there? I'm not sure what it needs to be on the website.
I just think, I think that if we are going to add something to the agenda, much like Mary mentioned at the start, it just says on the agenda, radar speed limit sign. But the town, if we're going to put comments at the beginning, no one would know what it is we're talking about on the agenda. So if we were to put it out there ahead of the meeting to say, hey, here's what we're thinking, and here's where it's going, then at the start of the meeting, our community could comment on it, is all.
So, I'm not sure. And again, that goes to people coming to meetings, and when you look out at this council room, it's the same people that I see coming to meetings. And it is, it's incumbent upon our residents to look at these meetings. They're on Zoom, they can view them, and, you know, I guess it's fine to go on a website, but it's something the chief worked on, and I'm not sure how much more detailed our agendas can be so that people will understand. And to the other issue, it's come up now a few times. So I think that if this council has issues with public comment being moved to the front, and it was something that was suggested in the past, then I think that's probably a discussion for council to have, how you want it now, because it seems like people wanted to know what was on the agenda, and then we, maybe you could answer their questions. But now the feedback is, well, no, now, even though we won't answer their questions, if they comment at the end of the meeting, then we want them to comment at the end of the meeting. So I don't know exactly where we want people to go with that.
If I can interrupt here, I want to be clear, though, is that we're talking, we're talking about a very large, at least 10 feet tall, blinking sign at the front of our community, for which no picture has been distributed to anyone, asking for people to give them time to see it. It is not on the agenda. The picture is not on the agenda of the front of our town. And giving people some time to see it and give us some feedback, I think, is warranted.
Yeah, I'd say I agree. I like that idea. I mean, it's not urgent. I mean, I'm all for it, but like, we don't have a, like, we're not going to hurt ourselves by waiting another month, or what, you know, whatever. So I don't see a problem with putting it up there, giving some time for people to comment or whatnot.
Right, and I will share with the group that I, I did take a picture of it, and I sent it out to quite a few people, and I had all favorable reviews. I think I had one that said, again, is this going to display signs? So that's important to know, right? We're taking some signs down to put this up. You know, and then there's questions over, is this a permanent sign, or is this a temporary sign? So that might have been a public comment made. I could address it, because I saw the photo, that this would be a permanent structure, not a temporary one moving around town. But the thought would be, would that benefit them if we had something that did move around town? If we're not paying for it, would it be something that, okay, it's on Chassleton for a month, but then maybe it gets moved to Moore Road for a month? And those would have been public comments, but...
If I could just add to the comments, we could move it if we chose to do so. I wouldn't recommend we move it every three to six months. Maybe if we want to move it, you know, once a year or something like that, we could, you know, put the, you know, existing sign that was there back in place, and we could move it to another location. Those that may want to see signs like this, Travel Johnson Road in Trail Creek, you'll see they have about four of them, from Michigan Boulevard to US 20, through that particular corridor. The town of Michiana Shores, I'll be attending their town council meeting tomorrow night. They're looking at possibly putting one on El Portal Drive as well. So pretty much any community that you travel, Michigan City has a few out as well. These are kind of the new trendy things that are out there. They're solar powered, so you're not having to run, you know, electrical leads to the actual signs. You just have to replace the batteries every so often when the solar generation doesn't, you know, charge your batteries anymore. So I would recommend you table it then for this month. I can put information on the website as far as, you know, the sign company and a link to Radar Signs, which is the vendor. But again, I was just looking for something that I felt would be important for the community. I often get, you know, complaints in the summer months that we have children in the roadways, people walking Chassleton, trying to go to the beach, and, oh my God, a speeding car came by. Chief, what can you do about it? This was kind of my way of saying, well, maybe I'll try and slow traffic down a little bit by putting in one of these signs.
Chief, I want to be, I want to be clear. We appreciate the work that you've gone and, and through the effort to get this. For me, this is very much process, especially in light of moving comments to the very beginning and making sure agendas are out. When I was walking into the building, an agenda was not published yet, right? And we're just getting our feet underneath us here, so taking some time, I appreciate, appreciate that we, we take a month, but I want to make sure that by not approving it tonight, that we don't appreciate the work that you've done.
I understand.
In this.
No offense taken.
Okay, so then we'll go on the website, and we'll get some comments.
You have, you have a motion and a second, so are you withdrawing that?
I'll withdraw the motion. Do you withdraw your second?
Yes.
Okay. And the only thing I want to say about public comments is, you know, we suggested that we do public comments at the beginning, because people used to complain when the public comments were, were at the end, that they were making comments after we already voted. So what the answer is, if it's the right answer for everyone, I'm not sure, but...
There's just some people that are never going to be happy. We're never going, what's the saying? You can, we can please some of the people all the time, but you can't please all people all, like, we could probably have nothing but all comments, all meeting, and then somebody would say, there's too many comments.
Well, just as a suggestion, and to dovetail on what JD said, I think some of this, as you guys are finding your way, and you have implemented a deadline to trying to get agenda items sooner, which will also allow, if someone calls, not to add to the clerk's plate, but if somebody calls for information that's available, those are all public records and public documents. So those that are following, paying attention, et cetera, can inquire, because the agendas will be on the website. The agendas, the information to back that up will be available, and those packets are out, and Deanna sends them out ahead of time. So all of that is readily available and can be disseminated. So I think part of it is the process, and, you know, certainly not discounting the comment that was made in public comment about that, but by moving it, it does give ahead. Tonight, if there was discussion about this, they would be commenting after you approved it.
Right.
And it would be a done deal. And so I think by what you're implementing will alleviate some of these fears, and that information is available to distribute.
And again, I applaud, Chief, this, you know, effort and everything, and by the way, I approve the sign, even though we don't have a motion or a second. I'm for it. I guess I'm just looking at, again, better preparing the details behind what we're going to vote on, sometimes slowing things down to make them go faster. So I just want to say thank you.
Public Safety Building, Holiday Construction Group, change request number seven for approval, $1,908 for SCBA air supply route.
The change order before you is necessary to properly outfit the air tanks for the fire department. This is one of those things at the early stages of construction that, as you begin to figure in the things that need to be moved into the building and the needs of the fire department, this is necessary to make sure that they have the proper, you know, air supply coming to their air filling station that fills their, you know, tanks that keep them surviving inside of an active fire. So it's $1,908 for the change in the pipe work that needs to be done.
Any questions? I would move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Holiday Construction Group, invoice number 10 for $355,860 for approval.
This is your standard invoice for construction as the construction phase continues for the new Public Safety Building. It's been reviewed by John Wall, myself, and in coordination with Joe Core, the superintendent of the project, and the recommendation is to pay for the work that's been completed for the new building.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Holiday Construction Group, change order number three for approval, and change order number four for approval.
Those items were emailed to you previously. Just looking over my copy here real quickly. Meg, do you have copies of those?
Here, right here.
Sorry. I've got the other copy. So these cover the electrical add-ons inside the building. Obviously, during the walkthrough phase, there were changes made to the electrical outlay within the building. Additionally, a door upstairs was changed from a single door to a double door up there to allow larger items to be moved into the mezzanine storage. We have on there additionally, a door strike for $170. And then also, there were some cedar beams over one of the canopies for $1,200 that are on there. That's items one through four. And then on the other change order on number four, you have two items on there, the labor and materials to enclose the apparatus bay by the overhead doors, $940. And then there's an add-on for concrete work. We're being charged the additional labor cost because of the winter conditions. It was outside the contract, as far as the timeline of when they started that work, for So those are the change orders that are before you, if you have any questions.
Any questions?
No.
Are you sure? Okay. I would make a motion to approve change order number three and number four.
Motion, second, please.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Woodruff &amp; Sons, Lake Shore Drive Water Service Project, invoice number one for approval,
Last week, a meeting took place between Haas Engineering, our water department, our liaison, John Wall, and Woodruff &amp; Sons. They had discussion in reference to the first invoice that you have for the Lake Shore Drive Water Service Improvement Project, this being invoice number one. There'll be some future invoices as well. There are some additional work in this invoice that was done. John had provided you previously with an explanation as to some of that work. There's still some unknowns as we go into the next 30 days of this project. We're hopeful that the work will not be substantial to increase the future invoices, but the recommendation of all parties that have met last week is to approve the invoice that's before you tonight. And it was verified also by Haas Engineering that the work has been performed and the materials have been supplied.
Any questions? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. CCMG Engineer Design for 2024-2 Proposal for Paving. Weaver Consultant Group Proposal for Field and Engineering Services for $3,650. And Haas &amp; Associates Proposal for 2022-1 CCMG OPC Update, St. Lawrence Ave Improvement Design.
So, Madam President, I'll take this and to approach Weaver Consultants, the $3,650. What that is for is St. Lawrence Drive out back of the town hall that leads from Oriole to Lake Shore Drive. All of us know it's in pretty poor condition. Rather than just going in and milling the surface and reapplying a new coat of asphalt onto the surface, we feel we'd be throwing money into the wind. Therefore, it's important that we look to see the structure of that roadway. John Wall has also looked at it, and through his expertise and his years in his professional, you know, field and his career of paving roads and that, has recommended, and Haas agreed, that we should do a boring or coring of the actual asphalt to see what structure is there, what's underneath the top surface of the asphalt, before the engineers can develop a final plan for engineering and the construction of that roadway. There is some work that needs to be done on St. Lawrence as well to get some of that water off of St. Lawrence, because that water is what is deteriorating, the asphalt surface there. So therefore, we may need to put in an additional catch basin as well. But that engineering work will be done in the engineering... But that engineering work will be done in the engineering and design phase that Haas has. So the first one, Weaver Consultants at $3,650, again, getting back to that, that just goes to Weaver to have them provide Haas with the findings of the road structure. Haas then takes that information, begins the design and engineering of St. Lawrence. They then take that design and engineering for St. Lawrence, combine it with a lot of the engineering that's already been done in the 2021 work that was never submitted for the CCMG funding. And then that second proposal, not to exceed just shy of $20,000, it was $19,000 and some change. That proposal is to allow Haas Engineering to complete the design and engineering phase to get our proposal for the CCMG ready for submittal to the state of Indiana. So before we can even apply for the CCMG grant, we have to have this engineering work done. We have to pay for this as part of our expenditures. It cannot be paid for our CCMG funding. So this work needs to be done before we can apply for the grant. CCMG funding has now been expanded from 1 million to 1.5 million that communities can apply for. In small communities such as ours, we're responsible for 25% of that match. So $250,000 on every million dollars that we receive is what we would be obligated to pay. And then this proposal that will probably come back to this council, I'm guessing probably in May or June, I think John, is what we anticipated roughly, would probably be for close to 1.5 million in paving. So, if I'd add anything?
Yeah. So the history is, we've tried to do as much as we can afford because you're getting 75% of it paid for by the state. So we have sat with the engineer and Mark and myself and tried to come up with some kind of a plan within the budgetary confines of our capital program. So you guys need to be thinking about, you know, how much we want to spend before we authorize the actual project to go forward. But this is how we get numbers together to propose to you guys what we want to do. So what Mark's talking about is precisely that. The $20,000 gets you all the information, the pricing, the bidding documents and all that stuff, ready for what they call the second call. So you have two opportunities during the year to apply for CCMG money. One is in January and you have to have all your ducks in a row before the end of the year, the calendar year that you're in, in order to apply for that January one. Then you get, then they'll give you an award. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. Generally, we've been very successful because we've implemented this engineering firm to help us. Then you have another opportunity for what they call the fall or the second call, which is what we're trying to do now. We're trying to get ready to do another call. And the reason we did that this particular year rather than going for a January call was because we have some expenditures in the stormwater fund for the Stop 17 project. So we want to wait until we accumulate some more dollars so we can do some of the stormwater work on the second call or this $1.1 million project that we tried to do two years ago because we want to accumulate a little more funds. We accumulate about a quarter million dollars in the stormwater fund every year. So if we're able to take that money and then be in a position to award this project in the fall of '24, pay for it in '25, if you're following me. So that's where the affordability piece comes in. In addition to that, just so you can kind of get a little better feel for the long term, although with you guys, we're only here for one year, but essentially what we're trying to do is do a five-year look ahead on the CCMG projects. We want to do Lake Shore Drive, for instance. We also know between the Stop 17 project and some of the other projects we need to do for drainage work, that we're not going to be able to afford another three-quarter million dollar, million dollar project on Lake Shore Drive until we accumulate some more funds in the stormwater. Because there's a, like, for instance, this $1.1 that we're trying to go after in the second call, about 500 of that is stormwater related. So we can take 500 times 25% and pay for that with stormwater funds, if you're following me. This sounds a little complicated, it's really not that complex, but just to give you a little, you know, forward-thinking look at what we're trying to accomplish as we look forward for the next couple of CCMG projects. But we hate to not take advantage of these programs because if, we just never know when the state's going to say, we're done. I don't think that'll happen because they increased the fuel tax like five years ago in order to be able to do this program. And it's just wonderful that they're spending this money on little burbs like us. If you're Michigan City, you only get 50% paid for. Our little town gets 75%, so it's a pretty sweet deal.
Well, and you're staying on it. There was one time, I think a few years ago, where we missed a deadline, I think a first call deadline or something, and then you run into second call and then weather is...
There's a couple of things that happened. I want to make you aware that when you tell the indot, the Indiana Department of Transportation, you want to go after a program of a million dollars, let's say, okay? That's an estimate, right? So when they do the work, it's a unit price contract, at the end of that job, they might spend $950,000. That $50,000 that the state gave you when you started this program, when they gave you the award and gave you the money, you have to give that back to them. So some of these big towns have gotten in major trouble because they didn't get it back within the deadline. So we have to be cognizant of those deadlines. We got to get that money back to them if we don't spend it. The other thing is you have to spend it precisely on what you told them you were going to spend it on. So you're limited to what you can do. You can't add some more stuff in later on. It doesn't work that way. There was one more point I wanted to make.
Let's see, John, once, let's say we're awarded the grant, isn't it 18 months we have to complete all the...
Yes, so you have to finish the project and within that timeframe. So what you're alluding to, Anita, is we got into a little bit of trouble because the prior two clerks ago actually neglected to finish the paperwork on time in that first, that call then, and that's why we couldn't do the $1.1 million program that we're trying to propose now two years ago. So we really kind of had a, so what we did was we scrambled around, did a second call, did a little smaller paving project of about $350,000. So we took advantage of the program, but we weren't able to do what we really wanted to do.
It's like our capital for this year for CCMG, more than likely we won't be spending it this year, but in 2025, our CCMG, if we submit and get this one, say, 1.1, 1.5, wherever it falls in there, we would then be doing the paving early next year and having to pay for it at some point next year.
And you will get another look at the total dollars. It's not like you're committing to 1.5 tonight.
No.
Or 1.3 or whatever it turns out to be. Once we do the engineering, get the numbers put together, before we actually apply to the indot for that second call in this fall, we'll come back to you. We'll have conversations with the budget and finance and you guys can say, hey, look, we can't afford 1.4 or 1.3 or whatever it is. We have to scale it back and we can do that. We can pull some streets out.
And just point of clarification here with Trista Walton, thank you for staying the whole time as well. Earlier, actually, in our initial meeting in December, you talked about how the wheel tax can drive also revenue for us to increase matching funds. Is that correct?
Yes, it's true. The fuel tax in many communities has reserved, you know, its revenue to that and they reserve that to be their portion of their reach to the grant.
Which is then only going to increase our ability to invest in our roads in our town that in some cases desperately need it like St. Lawrence.
I'm not familiar. I don't think we have a wheel tax currently, do we?
Yeah.
No.
No.
You're talking about maybe implement?
That's the point, yeah.
Gotcha. Okay.
Okay. And just so the council's aware too, so this engineering cost from Haas currently, like I said earlier, gets us to the point that the engineering design work is done to do the middle. Then you'll see another proposal from Haas. Once you decide what you want to submit, then Haas will then tell us for them to submit and manage it, here's going to be the next proposal as it gets submitted to the state of Indiana.
Just so we're perfectly clear, you can't, the CCMG award is strictly to build the work. You can't take the engineering money out of that. Some cities did that and they got in major trouble. We have to come up with our own engineering front costs, our bidding costs, our construction inspection costs. That's outside of what the grant allows you to spend.
Okay. Okay. I would move to approve the Weaver Consultants Group Proposal and the Haas &amp; Associates Proposal.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Combining Stormwater Board and Public Works Board. I believe perhaps we can't do that.
Maybe in the future at some point.
But right now, it's not a possibility.
Okay. So can we have, for example, three people that are on the Public Works Committee be on the...
There's no limit with regard to who can be on. The way that the Stormwater Board was set up was to be three council members. And at that time, we were transitioning because there was a separate Water Board, which was rolled into the Public Works and Safety Board. But, yeah, generally it's been three council members. So to answer your question, that's, that was the intention and until we reach a point where you might be able to roll all those together, that's what my recommendation would be.
Okay. So we need three council members who would like to be on the Stormwater Board.
Man, you know. Well, I'm just dying to, but since I am on Public Works, I'll go ahead and raise my hand. It makes sense for me, so.
Yeah, good joint.
Now I need two more.
Kendra and Shannon?
Come on, who wants to be our third?
I'll do the, I'll be the third.
Good. I don't even know, do we meet? I mean, will we meet?
Combine the meetings, though, can we have the Stormwater Board meet at the same time as the other?
Smart.
Advertise, you can, however you do your advertisement, you can do a joint meeting.
Okay. I think that would be a great idea. We shall do that. Okay. We need a motion to appoint Kendra, Shannon and Joy to the Stormwater Board.
I'll make that motion to appoint Shannon, Joy and Kendra to the Stormwater Board.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Congratulations.
No. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And we will set that up so that we meet at the same time as the Public Works. Next, we have Senate Bill 253 Regarding Life Rings at Beach Access. I would just like to say that our lobbyist, excuse me, Chris Gibson, worked with Senator Polk and got the color red added to the bill for life rings, so that will save us $11,000. So we don't have to replace all of our life rings.
Are they still going to overfeed the fire on the 911 dial at the beach location?
I didn't hear that.
Everybody just stay out of the water.
No swimming allowed anymore. Okay. I think that brings us to council comments.
None for me?
I have one. Chief and I, and we talked about this last year, was having AED slash CPR training for the public. And we had talked maybe about getting the fire department involved. Chief and I talked about it and what we kind of came up with was, once the, once the Public Safety Building is opened, it would be a great way to have people come over there and see it and hopefully we can get the LBVDP, Long Beach Volunteer Fire Department, involved in helping us with that. But I think it would be a great community effort and a wonderful way to show off the Public Safety Building, which I will encourage people, go look at that building, it's fabulous.
We have issued a...
Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you.
Any other comments? Claims approval, Meg?
For January Town Checks, Number 20433 to 20511, totaling $236,898.93. Water checks, Number 54882 to 54912, totaling $110,727.32. January payroll of $94,122.10. Can we have a motion to approve those?
I have one question. What's Cargill, Inc.?
What, what did you, what was it?
Road salt.
Cargill.
Oh, Cargill, okay. Okay, thank you. That was my only question. I would make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
I know, I'm trying to help you, Joy.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. That was a long one.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Ellen. Paul. Dave.